Good evening and welcome to the Hutchinson School Board Candidate Forum. We're happy to provide an opportunity for candidates to introduce themselves to voters and discuss issues relevant to the position of school board member. I'm Brian Shocker, Regional Editor of the Hutchinson Station, and I'll be the moderator for our forum tonight. Joining me at the table is Hutchinson Chamber of Commerce President Valerie McIntune, who helped plan tonight's forum and will assist with timing. We're happy to have an audience here in the council chambers at Hutchinson City Center and those of you joining us at home via HCVN. We appreciate the help from Education Hutchinson, the Chamber of Commerce, former Hutchinson Leader Editor Doug Hanneman, current school board members and others who helped plan this important opportunity for voters to get to know the candidates. A little bit about on the format for tonight's meeting. Our forum will include three parts. The first segment will allow each candidate to give a two-minute introduction of themself. The second segment will consist of several questions prepared in advance of the forum. Each candidate will be allowed up to 90 seconds for a response to each question. Finally, each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement. Candidates' answers to the questions will be timed. When the candidate reaches 15 seconds before the end of their allotted time, Valerie will raise this yellow paper as an alert to begin wrapping up their statement or answer. The red paper will be raised when your full time has elapsed. Before we get started, I want to remind those in the audience that this is a candidate forum. It's intended for the candidates to speak and share their ideas. To make the best use of our time and to ensure an orderly process, we ask that there be no applause, cheering, or booing. Anyone who does any of these will be asked to leave immediately. If a similar interruption occurs a second time, the entire audience may be asked to leave. Thank you in advance for your courteous attention to these guidelines. Now, let's get started with our forum. Three positions on the Hutchinson School Board are up for election this year, and six candidates have filed, including, from left, Tiffany Bernard, Andrew J. Evenson, Diane Jankowski, Michael Massman, Mark McHaleb, and Sarah Pullman. I'd like to thank them all for participating tonight. In addition to the candidates' answers tonight, voters can learn more about each of them and their positions in the October 3rd edition of the Hutchinson Station, which included question-and-answer sessions with each. Now, let's get started. We will start alphabetically, on the left. With each question, we'll rotate one spot over, so you're not always starting or always ending. So, start with Tiffany. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to serve on the Hutchinson School Board.
I'm glad I get to start with this one. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming. We are grateful for both of you and also Tina from the district office. Tina Borliczek really helped make all this come together, too, so thank you. I'm Tiffany Bernard. I was born and raised here. I went to college at the College of St. Benedict in St. John's University to study psychology and pre-med. After that, I spent some time in Guatemala, working in a rainforest clinic where I quickly decided that I was not going to be a doctor. Learned a lot about myself through that process. And after that, moved to North Minneapolis and lived and worked there until I met my husband Blake. And when I was 29, we decided to boomerang back to Hutchinson, open a restaurant, start a family. So Hutchinson is not only my hometown, but where we live today by choice. I have three children in the district. We have a high schooler, a middle schooler, and an elementary kiddo. Mark is our bus driver. I know almost everybody in the audience, and I think it's a wonderful thing that we have a public school system that relies on the whole community. So I want to be on the school board because I think that our school is a central part of the success of our community. It's integral to my own family and our goals and our values. Education matters to us, and I want my kids to have every opportunity that I had, so thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Andrew?
Hi, everybody. I'm Andy Evenson, and my wife and I moved to Hutchinson three years ago with our two little girls. So I'm a newcomer to Hutchinson. However, I did grow up in Gibbon, outside of Gibbon, on a small family farm, so about 40 miles south. So if my answers seem rambling or silly, it's because I only went to GFW. It's of 1999. I followed that up. I went to Concordia College in Morehead, Minnesota, and graduated from there with a bachelor's. My majors were political science, and my minors were religion and classical Greek, which really comes in handy. I went to seminary from there. I was ordained in 2007, was a Lutheran pastor full-time for 14 years in congregations in Pennsylvania and on the east side of the Twin Cities. Lake Elmo was the last place I was for five years. In the midst of that journey, I married my wife Alyssa back in 2005, and she started out going to get a degree in, a master's degree in English literature at Rutgers in Camden while I was in Philadelphia going to seminary, and learned that she didn't really want to teach college-level English. So she went to work in marketing until 2009, when she was laid off. And so she was laid off, very depressed, sad, couldn't get a job. It was the Great Recession. And we went to dinner one night, and I said, "So if you could just start over and do anything, what would you do?" And she said, "I think I'd be a doctor. I don't think they get laid off a lot." And so she did. She went to medical school, did pre-med work, went to medical school, and that's why we moved to Hutchinson. She's a radiologist at the hospital. So I'm running for school board because I want it to be a great place for our girls, fourth grade and kindergarten, and also because I want public education to be able to teach kids how to navigate life, even when it ends up that you need a second, third, or fourth career.
Thank you, Andy. Diane?
Hi, Diane Jankowski. I've lived in Hutchinson for over 30 years with my husband, Michael. I joined the Air Force in 1983, and I went to Texas. I served during the First Gulf War, but not in a war zone. Joined the Air Force, see Texas. So I married my husband. We've been married for 34 years. We have two children. Our daughter lives in the cities and does well, and our son is autistic. He attended Hutchinson schools. He was a bit much for them to handle at one point because he was a Level IV autistic child. So special needs is a big part of my life. I want all the kids to do well. I'm also the commander of the American Legion here in Hutchinson. We do the special needs party for the special needs kids, and that's coming up December 19th, I believe. And each kid gets a gift. It's a big part of our life to have the special needs kids to get what they want and to be treated respectfully. And I also, my daughter was a gifted child, so she was gifted with math, and she could read at the 11th grade level when she was in fourth grade. So I think each child needs to have what they need to succeed. They need specific classes. I don't think lumping them all together in one big group helps the kids because the kids who are gifted need to have those gifts recognized, and the kids who are special needs need to have their needs recognized. And the kids in the middle, they need to have their needs recognized as well. So I think each kid needs their programming to be directed to achieve their best goals in school, and that's why I'm running for school board.
Thank you, Diane. Michael?
All right. First of all, thanks to everybody who made a point to come out tonight, and for those watching at home, education in our community is important. I think our community is passionate about it, and so I always appreciate seeing members of the community here. I'm running for my second term on the school board to continue the work that I think the school board has succeeded in doing the last four years. I was born and raised in Hutchinson. I have six siblings who are also in the area. This is a place all of us chose to call home. My wife Angela and I met in 2007 in the Hutchinson High School gym, and we've been together ever since. Married in 2010. We have two kids, a daughter and a son, both who attend school here in our district. And my wife is also an employee who works in the special needs paraprofessional department at some of our younger grades. So education in Hutchinson is not just something that I'm hopeful to help with. It's something that directly impacts my family, and I understand that it impacts yours. And I'm hopeful that, over the next four years, your voice will matter and will continue to address the needs of our ever-growing diverse population. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
All right. I'm Mark McHaleb, and I actually grew up in St. Cloud. And the reason I was up there is my father started the journalism department up there in 1963. And then, so both my parents were educators. I moved to Coon Rapids, came here over 25 years ago, married my wife Pam. We have raised four kids. Three of them went through the system here, and our next-door neighbor is sitting right out here, so it's fun to see that. But I've got a couple different occupations at the moment. One of them is school bus driver, and I guess I really appreciate, you know, I get to deal with kids every single day in a positive way. Because one of the things as a bus driver that you see is, you see parents, you see students, you see teachers, you see the whole, kind of the whole gamut. And so these children, one of the first places that faces that they see in the morning is us, and that's an important thing, especially if they're dealing with, you know, various issues. So the reason, my degree is in biology or science, wildlife biology, botany. And that was, I graduated from St. Cloud State University and was overseas a couple years in Denmark. So I understand the language issues because I was one of the guys on the other side of the fence. I don't speak Danish very well. So the reason I'm running for school board is Hutchinson used to have an excellent, excellent education reputation, and I think over, since, well, specifically since COVID, but it seems to be declining. Now, you know, those are issues for later on, but I would, it used to be that Hutchinson was a place you could come for, you knew it was an excellent education system. And so the reason I'm running is because I do look at children individually. I think parents are important. I think the school board's important, and one of the things, teachers, you know, are very, very important. And I know that there's a shortage right now in regards to that, but we have to learn to, you know, to work together and, you know, bridge those gaps. But the children are paramount. You know, they're not our children, they're your children. And so I'm a grandfather of 10, so I, you know, I can look at these kids as my grandchildren. And that's a blessing because each one is completely different. And so I think that's what we need to start focusing on. The academic issue, I'm in agreement with Michael in that we need to start bringing that academic standard back to where it was.
Mark, we're at the time limit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Hi, my name is Sarah Pullman. I am running for my second term on the board. I was a trained teacher, and then my first beautiful daughter was born, and I just couldn't go back to work. And that beautiful daughter moved here with us when she was two years old, and then we had three more children. So my husband is Brian. He's a physician in the community. My oldest daughter is Mara, went through Hutchinson, then went to U of M and lives in Boston now as an engineer. My second daughter is Leah, went through this wonderful community and decided to become a teacher. Go, Leah! And she goes to Concordia. She's doing her student teaching right now. Ben just graduated this year and is up at U N D, going to fly airplanes, so beware in four years. No, he is, he will be amazing. And then my niece is in 10th grade. So my life has been focused on my family, and education has been super important in our family and in the family that I grew up in. And I am running because I have a passion for education. I have a passion for students. I understand that every child has different needs and that it is difficult to be able to have every child's needs met. And so it has been a joy to learn all of the intricacies, thank you, all of the intricacies of what makes a school run. I have learned so much in the last four years, and I really, I think I've done a fantastic job, but I want to use the four years that I've been on the board to propel me forward so that I can do an even better job in the next four. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And we'll go to the first question of the night then, and we will start with Andrew. Andrew, what do you see as the most important issue or issues for the school board to get right in the next few years for Hutchinson Public Schools? What issues caused you to run for Hutchinson School Board?
I was having a conversation with some folks at Vacation Bible School this summer with our church, and some of them are teachers, some of them are parents. They were talking about some of, some of the teachers, their contracts weren't renewed or they, you know, they weren't, they were let go because positions were eliminated this year because of budget cuts and those things. And so I'm not running because I'm like mad about that or something. I just, I know it's happening because of declining enrollment and mandates that aren't being funded, and there's some of those cliffs in the next few years. And so I think it's really important when we're going, we know we're going to be facing budget cuts, we know we're going to be facing potential referendums, I think, to raise because it is so hard to educate and meet the needs of every student. That's our mission. So I think I would like to help us, if elected, I guess, establish some principles or be guided by our core values as we make these decisions because they're not going to be easy. And as somebody who is a Lutheran pastor for 14 years, I understand declining enrollment and going to church on Sunday morning is not the most popular thing in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane, what do you see as the most important issue or issues for the school board to get right in the next few years for Hutchinson Public Schools? What issues caused you to run for Hutchinson School Board?
The main issue that caused me to run for the school board was that there was a 40% decline in achievement throughout Minnesota. Now, I don't know that that's 40% in Hutchinson, but even if it's just half of that and it's 20%, that's 20% too much. I don't think there should be a decline. The kids have all the computers and the apps that they need to do well, but unfortunately, I think that with that comes a lot of social media and social pressure. So I think that we need to get back to the basics. When you have third graders who cannot read, that's going to affect every subject after third grade because if you can't read, you can't read a math book, you can't read a history book or a science book. You need to be able to read. When my kids were little, you could go in and be a volunteer at the school and help little kids learn to read, and I thought that was a great program. And I realized that that might be challenging because, you know, who are you getting in there? You know, but I go to St. Ace's, and when I volunteered at St. Ace's, you had to submit to a background check. And I think that as a volunteer for the school, I should be required to do the same thing. So I think the kids need achievement. They need everything to be taken seriously. So that's it.
Thank you. Michael, what do you see as the most important issue or issues for the school board to get right in the next few years for Hutchinson Public Schools? And what issues caused you to run for Hutchinson School Board?
I'm going to answer your question backwards. Four years ago, I made the decision to run because my kids were entering the public education system, and I felt like the most impactful thing for me to do was to run for the board at the time. Going back to your first question, I think there are a few very pressing issues the school board has to get right in the next four years. I believe student achievement is critical. We are seeing some declines in our test scores. However, as our administrative team has done a wonderful job expressing over the last several years, testing scores may not be the only indicator of a student's achievement. I think we need a holistic picture. I think we need to understand the social pressures. I talked with a teacher this evening and shared a statistic that I'm going to say is wrong, but she didn't correct me yet. Teachers get to spend 13% of a student's time with that student in a year. How are they fixing the other 87%? And society's got to pick up that luggage. The other most pressing issue in our district specifically is a lack of a clear strategic plan. A strategic plan takes the insight of an entire community, the people in this room, the educators, the board, and gathers what we as a community see for the long-term future of our district, and we haven't done that in a long time. It's going to cost money. It's going to be laborsome, but we owe it to our team. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, what do you see as the most important, excuse me, important issue or issues for the school board to get right in the next few years? What issues caused you to run for Hutchinson School Board?
Okay, I guess probably one of the most pressing issues that I see is that there's a lot, I just got to be honest, that there's a lack of trust in the current school board. And people in the community don't feel like, the people that I've talked, and I've talked to quite a few people, they don't seem like, they don't feel that they can come and legitimately talk. They feel like they're being, for lack of a better word, ignored. Okay? And so the gist of that is basically, there needs to be more trust. When that comes, then all of the other things start to fall into place. And so as far as what made me run for school board again, you know, as a bus driver, I get to see the stuff the kids bring home and working with the kids. And over the last three years, I'll just, one of the things that I've done at the beginning of the year is to ask the kids, "What is 50 plus 50 minus 49?" They can't answer it. These are fifth graders. Okay? I did that this year again with seventh graders. They still couldn't answer it. So academics is a big issue. Yes, the social issues are important, but academics, you know, a social issue I don't believe is going to help you get a job. You gotta be, you gotta be, the basics are there. Math, how many people, if you go into a restaurant, how many people?
Mark, we're going to have to wrap up. Sorry about that. Okay, Sarah, what do you see as the most important issue or issues for the school board to get right in the next few years? And what issues caused you to run for the Hutchinson School Board?
So I'm going to answer backwards, just like Mike did. I ran for the school board four years ago. I was at an outdoor book study during COVID, and I was, I have several teacher friends, and they were telling me that the board and the administration didn't care about them, didn't value them. And I had known a few, and I'm like, "That can't be true." And so I got on the board because I wanted to build a bridge between the administration, the board, and the people that, the staff that work here in Hutchinson. And I think that we, through negotiations, through our new superintendent who has focus groups, and we've really listened, we on board have asked a lot of questions, and I think we have actually achieved that. The biggest, most important issue for the board to do is to come together to give the administration goals. Another word would be a strategic plan. What do we want things to look like in 10 years? And then we need to trust our administration to figure out, how do we get there? The reason that is so important that I've learned is there are a lot of things that come at us, whether it be the science of reading and how that's going to change, or how we get finances. Those things come up. So if we have a strategic plan, we are not always reacting. We can be proactive.
Thank you. Tiffany, what do you see as the most important issue or issues for the school board to get right in the next few years? And what issues caused you to run for Hutchinson School Board?
Right, so not to repeat my peers up here, but I had the advantage of being, I was on the board for one year before the election, so I have one extra year, and it was paramount that we made Hutchinson Public Schools an amazing place to work. And I think we've worked really hard at that, and we're not there yet, but we, I think that we got to get that right. Everybody knows the labor shortage is everywhere, and we've got to make it that our school is a place where everybody wants to work. We have to do a better job, to your point, Mark, of effectively communicating to the community exactly how complicated the decision-making is. What is our role? What is the state's role? We have to better educate the public on what actually our role is as a school board member. And then with that, kind of effectively find a way for our community, combined with the school, combined with this board, to go and advocate to help make those changes possible here. We have been so reactionary in the last five years that we have not been able to go out and cheerlead for ourselves, and it's time. Like, we need it, right? I'm not yellow yet, so I'm going to throw out this stat. Where do you live? There's these stats everywhere. If you have a $250,000 house and you want to raise $2,800 to your per pupil formula, the city of Hopkins pays $388 per household on that. St. Louis Park, $446. Alexandria, $841 per household. Hutchinson, $1,209. That should make you mad. Done. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we will start with Diane. Diane, what do you see as the job of a school board member? And what is your vision for Hutchinson Public Schools?
Well, for me, the job of a school board member is to work with the community as well as the rest of the board members because each board member only has one vote. So we have to collaborate. We have to work together. We have to support the school and the students and the community. We have to bring all those parties together so that they all feel supported. If the parents or the community members don't feel like they're welcome in the school, which has happened, then that doesn't help the community to feel like their investment into the school is a good one. I want, a lot of the programs that I work with personally aren't always welcome in the school. Sometimes they are, sometimes they're not, but they would be beneficial for the students. As I said, the commander of the American Legion, we've got programs that would be very good for the students. A government program, we have an oratorical or speech program- Uh, a government program, we have a oratorical or speech program, those kind of things would be great for the students. They would also be helpful to the staff because the teachers could use those um, items to help the kids get ready. Anything we can do to help the community feel like they're welcome, to make the kids feel like they're welcome, and to make the teachers and administration and the school board feel like we're all working together is what I would do.
Thank you. Michael, what do you see as the job of a school board member and what is your vision for Hutchinson Public Schools?
Um, Tiffany raised a great point about ensuring that the community understands the role of a school board and the limitations that a board operates in, and I think that's something lacking in our community. Um, with that said, the school board really has very few functions. Hire and and maintain a superintendent, approve a budget and set a strategic plan. Um, in addition to that, it's important to advocate on behalf of our students, our staff and our community at the state level, at the local level, um, to ensure that our unique district is heard and represented. Um, my vision for Hutchinson Public Schools is a place where people want to take their kids, leave their kids and return to when they have kids of their own. Um, we've made great strides and Tiffany alluded to, I don't think we're there yet. I think the community doesn't think we're there yet. There's a lot of work to do. Um, but we have made a lot of groundwork in improving relationships and increasing transparency um, to make sure that our staff are included in the decision-making at the board. And so I would just say as a vision, we need to continue that work. We need to gain the community's trust. Um, we also need a community that understands and participates in school board um, meetings, participates and understands school board functions and operations. Um, as a whole, um, we have a very involved and passionate community when it comes to public education. Uh, we just need to take that one step further.
Thank you. Mark, what do you see as the job of a school board member and what is your vision for Hutchinson Public Schools?
I guess I um, would go along with Michael. There are very few um, actual functions. The, the community needs to realize that they can come to the school board. Um, I've, I've spoken with a number of teachers as of late and um, their hands are tied too. So as a school board member, we're pu- we're public servants to as liaisons between, you know, the, the, the community, the parents, the teachers. Um, and yes, policy things are the issue, uh, how do you implement those? Um, as far as my vision for, I guess I would, I would say that communication is always, is is always paramount. And if you have good, open communication, I think the parents that are in the room understand that with your kids, that you will have um, com- uh, not compliance, um, you will have uh, cooperation. And so, so that is a place to start. Education, um, I know that many times uh, parents don't feel like they can uh, participate or ask because they feel like they're against the wall. So the communication, I think, is paramount. Education, uh, a good quality, a place to bring kids up is, would be my vision.
Thank you. Sarah, what do you see as the job of a school board member and what is your vision for Hutchinson Public Schools?
So I think the job of a school board member is to listen to the staff, the administration, the citizens, the taxpayers, and try to communicate with all of them, you know, try to be the liaison. Um, I also think it is uh, the responsibility of a board member to educate themselves on all of the needs of a district, all of the requirements and constraints that a district has. And finally, I think it is the responsibility of a school board member to um, advocate for their students, whether it be um, at the governor's office, with your representatives, at the county, or with the citizens. And the last question was, what's my vision?
Yes.
My vision would be that the people of Hutchinson are proud of the students that we have worked with for thirteen years. And when they graduate, they say, I want that child, no, that adult to work at my business or to go to my uh, al- not alumni, my, what? My, the university or college that I went to. I want the community to be proud of every student.
Thank you. Tiffany, what do you see as the job of a school board member and what is your vision for Hutchinson Public Schools?
Yeah, I, it's hard after going after Mike and Sarah, cuz we all, we're gonna say the same thing. I, let, let's think of it this way. Um, the school board is almost like the board of a nonprofit organization and you're all our shareholders. And it is our job to make sure that we are giving you a product that is relevant, that is challenging, that is meaningful to our community. So we are the liaison between that. Um, this is a business, um, and that y'all are, that we all are paying for, right? And the business is helping our children become the best possible version of an adult that they can be. That doesn't look the same for everybody. Um, so my vision, um, when we get out on the other side, is that we have challenged the relevance of everything being taught in our classroom. Tiger Path has been an amazing program. Um, Gary Coring at the welding department at Hutchinson High School is getting kids super engaged in jazz to do things with their hands. And we have college in the schools classes where kids can take really advanced computer science classes. Um, we've got an amazing farm-to-school program where our elementary kids get to go outside and dig with their hands and grow things. Like, so we are, we, we are doing amazing things. I hope that we can honestly look at every graduate and say that we made something for them so that they can see themselves in the future, but then also here, so that, yeah, we can be proud and welcome them back to the community.
Thank you. Andrew, what do you see as the job of a school board member and what is your vision for Hutchinson Public Schools?
What I told my daughters is that if I got on the board, I was going to mandate school uniforms. Now, that's exactly the opposite of what I think the role of a school board member is. Although if I could find people that agreed with me and the administration that would want it, it would save me a lot of trouble the next ten years or so. But uh, I've said a lot about this in posts and 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 articles and things. Um, uh, I actually served on a school board when I was in Pennsylvania, ran as a write-in candidate in two thousand seven. And I won. Um, yeah, and uh, so my wife knows what that's like to be married to somebody on school board. She's probably putting up signs for the other candidates. She doesn't want me to win. But uh, what I learned then is that, you know, uh, your job on school board is not to be the superintendent. I have a sister-in-law who's a superintendent. Sounds like a horrible job, would never want to. Sorry. Um, but, and I, and I don't, I'm, I'm not, I, I didn't go to school for that, right? I'm not a superintendent. So uh, but it is, um, I think, let's be honest, like, a huge role of the school board is to be uh, one of the six people who passes a budget that can pay for the stuff that we need to do. So um, it's gonna be in the next four years, I think, to raise enough taxes, to have enough trust in the community that we can pass referenda to do the things that we need to do. And to do that, we need to have transparent meetings and all the rest.
Thank you. Onto our third question, we'll start with Michael. How do you view the role of athletics and extracurricular activities in students' education? And how would you propose to maintain or enhance these at Hutchinson Schools?
It's a great question. Um, and for those of you who follow the work of the school board, this is something that we are actively working on right now. Um, and we have asked a lot of our athletics director and his team so that we can better understand this exact conversation. Um, first of all, extracurriculars and athletics, and I appreciate that you brought up both because um, both are critical to every student. Um, those are things that empower a student to be their true self in a different setting. And it, it ties right back into their educational experience. Um, a student empowered to participate in debate, to participate in speech, in arts, in athletics, um, tends to be a more involved student, tends to be a higher performing student and tends to be someone who builds character above and beyond what you can build in a classroom. And that's not to say that those who don't participate don't build character, but it certainly comes in a different way. Uh, one of the ways to address extracurriculars and athletics in our own district is understanding how much money those programs take, where that money comes from, how it's, how it's compensated and paid for, um, and what the student gains from it. And that is what, as a board right now, we're working to better understand. It's something that hasn't been tracked historically and something that if we're gonna make a decision about programmatic changes, we need to understand the bottom line.
Thank you. Mark, how do you view the role of athletics and extrac- extrac- yeah, extracurricular activities in students' education? And how would you propose to maintain or enhance these at Hutchinson Schools?
Okay, so I've been here for twenty-five years. Uh, we have an excellent sports program. I think though, that as I see things, I think that sports are way overrated. I'll be honest with you on that. Um, I think that we have to um, we need to start focusing more on the educational aspects of it. Yes, uh, one of the things that I said recently to a friend is, you know, Hutch football has lost three in a row. And uh, they need to learn how to lose, cuz, because that happens in life. Um, so I think the folk, while they're good, I think the focus is too strong on the sports. Um, as far as extracurricular, absolutely. Uh, my daughters were in mock trial, um, and a couple other things. And uh, it does help to build character. But then again, um, you know, if you don't have the academics behind it, um, I guess it's not really gonna help the situation a whole lot. So it needs to be a balanced approach. Uh, we do spend, like Michael said, a lot of money on sports. Um, the, some of the extracurricular things are um, excellent. Act- a few, quite a few excellent programs involved in, in Hutchinson. But it needs to be a more balanced approach.
Thank you. Sarah, how do you view the role of athletics and extracurricular activities in students' education? And how would you propose to maintain or enhance these at Hutchinson Schools?
Well, I see our job is to educate students and so their education must come first. That being said, some children come to school simply because that's the way they get onto the football team or that's the way they get to sing, or that's the way um, they get to learn how to argue so they can win an argument with their parents, right? I mean, also, my kid goes to school because he wants to see his friends because they're more interesting than me, which I argue with myself. But um, I see that there's true value though in the athletics and the activities, not just cuz it gets the kids there, but they are learning teamwork, leadership, responsibility, and definitely time management. Um, a student who is involved in an activity will often do better in school um, for two reasons. One, they may have time, they don't get to play basketball. That happened um, on my son's basketball team last year where some kids couldn't play for a little while cuz they had poor grades. So they have to maintain good grades for those things. Um, and second, I will tell you that when I was a kid, when I had a job or I was active in uh volleyball or um, taekwondo, those were the times I did better in school because I could do my ti- I learned time management.
Thank you. Tiffany, how do you view the role of athletics and extracurricular activities in students' education? How would you propose to maintain or enhance these at Hutchinson Schools?
Yeah, so um, I think we're talking about student engagement again, right? And this could be their ticket to what they're engaged with in school. Or maybe um, they finally found a friend group that they can identify with in the classroom. All things that can increase student achievement. So it is really important. Um, it's also, it's, it's easy to say we value education more. I can, I agree with that and it's easy to say that. The complicated part is that we do need the student engagement, is what the kids want, and we do subsidize it out of our general education fund. So the more money sports costs, the less we could, or the less we might have for the classroom if we're oversubsidizing it. So it's a balance. Um, we have started a booster club in town about a year ago and this just might be the role of philanthropy in the community to step in and help make some of these activities continue to grow and be successful for kids without um, sacrificing the success in the classroom.
Thank you. Andrew, how do you view the role of athletics and extracurricular activities in students' education? And how would you propose to maintain or enhance these at Hutchinson Schools?
Well, first, I would like to say there's no better value for the dollars we spend than I think extracurriculars and athletics. Um, I think um, you look at the, the coaches who and the, the, the teachers who pour their time into these after-school or before-school activities, how much time they're giving for how little we're paying for it. I mean, I don't like that we maybe take advantage of people, but, but it is a huge benefit to small groups of kids who get to do this stuff. And so the value is, is huge. I, my seminary dean of students always said to us, he said, never let uh, classes get in the way of your education. And I took that to heart and, and I, I, I mean, extracurriculars are always just, they are extra. But they are not expendable. And um, I, I don't, I don't, I think we take them very seriously uh, for what they can do to helping our students and to building our community. I was at the football game Friday night and uh, it's not just a football game, right? It's the marching band. And it's the, just for the, the kids dancing and this is the color guard and it's, it's, it's the music boosters selling hot dogs and everything else. So you, I don't know how you put a price on that, but I know that if we wanna be creative, we can look at things like, I believe we're partnering in our soccer program with Glencoe Silver Lake. And we may have some other, maybe there's some other opportunities like that. I think we can be creative and it can be both and.
Thank you. Diane, how do you view the role of athletics and extracurricular activities in students' education? How would you propose to maintain or enhance these at Hutchinson Schools?
Well, I think that academics obviously comes first. If the kids can't read or write or, you know, just do their mathematics or their science, all that has to come first. Now, uh, athletics I do think is important and we do have some community uh, cooperation. Uh, like the lacrosse team, they partner with the Legion. The hockey team partners with another group. So they're raising funds for their own program, so it's not a burden on the taxpayer, which I think is good. I think that the kids learn to take responsibility for their programs. I think they um, participate in school because they have to so that they can earn the grades, so that they can participate. And I do think we need more partnering with the community because when the community by choice partners with the teams and the kids, I think then they feel like they're part of the school. And I think the kids feel like they're part of the community and it all starts in the community. I think we need to have everybody work together. And our community standards are very, very important and the kids need to know that. But they also know, and they need to know, that the community supports them too.
Great, thank you. Our next question, we will start with Mark. Mark, if elected, how would you gather input from constituents? And how would you, how would that input play a role in your decision-making on the school board?
Okay, as far as input, I think um, we need to go to the community. We need to be talking with people all the time. Uh, we need to get that kinda input. I also believe that uh, there needs to be, I know there's a certain amount of it now. There needs to be more interaction between uh, the board and the public. Uh, that might be, I know there's uh, special meetings, special breakout sessions where there could just be an open discussion between uh, the community and the board. where there could just be an open discussion between, uh, the community and the board. And that those, those ideas are seriously considered, um, as to making the decisions for, uh, for the board. So that, yeah, again, it's an open communication between the two.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, if elected, how would you gather input from constituents? And how would that input play a role in your decision-making on the school board?
I would, um, say that I think the best way to do it is to be out in the community, to be at school events, but also being seen around town, um, walking on the loose line where somebody could say, hey, aren't you a school board member? And, um, always answering your phones. Uh, when a constituent calls and have, calling them back and receiving emails and those types of things. I guess that's where I'm going with that.
Okay, very good. Tiffany, if elected, how would you gather input from constituents? And how would that input play a role in your decision-making on the school board?
This is like one of my favorite parts about this job is being able to talk to the variety of people in our community about the variety of things that they care about. Um, we as board members kinda show up with our own lived experience and I use that lens to, to make decisions. And when I can listen to you and hear you through your lived experience, you can kinda understand, um, things a little bit better in the community. So, um, how do you do that? You do that by talking, you do that by showing up to things, you do that by volunteering in the school. Um, seeing what that impact means in the classroom, in the hallways, in the lunchroom. I take every opportunity I get to be in the schools. Um, foolishly, five years ago, I thought that this was a little bit more of an operational gig and I get to be in my kids' classroom a little bit more and have lunch with them. That's not what this is. Um, yeah, I, so any chance we get to volunteer and if it works with my work schedule, I love it. Um, and, and I talk to staff, what does this mean? How does this impact you? Um, or we just ask Tina, what's going on? Just kidding. Um, and then I think also, uh, one thing that we are trying to implement, um, but again, without a strategic plan and without, um, feeling like we have to constantly be reactive. I think it would be really lovely to have work sessions on our off weeks where we have public comment at the end. So you are there at the meeting if you so choose and you're with us and you hear us working through and talking through things. And at the end, there's public comment. And then if you're still hanging out, maybe we can answer those questions one-on-one. So just creating like the space to, to make that happen if you show up. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew, if elected, how would you gather input from constituents? And how would that input play a role in your decision-making on the school board?
I think this is a really hard one because, um, we have a tendency to listen to the loudest voices or the crankiest voices, uh, or the most intimidating voices among us. And, uh, and I've, I faced that when I, when I was a full-time pastor. Um, I guess because there's always people who, who don't wanna move forward or, you know, um, and, um, every time usually things came up for a vote, um, the majority, the silent majority, uh, or the quieter majority, uh, would prevail. And so I would listen, I would answer my emails, check, you know, listen to emails, talk to people on the phone, talk to people in, at Cash Wise, um, you know, uh, we, I think we have to all live in, in the dis- yes, of course, that's necessary. We're not carpetbaggers. We live in the district. And so we're here, right? So you see us around town. Now, I do work down in Winthrop, uh, on, on a, a family farm, uh, with my in-laws, but, uh, but I would be around and answer questions. But here's where I think I might disagree with maybe all the board members or a lot of the board members on something. The, I was at a board meeting with my daughter and she was, uh, playing ukulele and they were highlighting that and it was lovely. Um, and then, uh, at the public comment time, uh, the, there was a discussion about allowing public comments for non-agenda items. And then it, it, it kinda can become this free-for-all. And I, I saw it at the last board meeting. It just became a transphobic, uh, conversation that I think, you know, was demonizing, uh, the youth of our district. So I actually would advocate less engagement totally open.
Thank you. Diane, if elected, how would you gather input from constituents? And how would that input play a role in your decision-making on the school board?
Well, I would seek to, uh, go to the different groups in the community and ask if I could speak to them. And perhaps they could come and tell me their concerns, you know, because sometimes we get into Cash Wise and we only see the same group of people there that we always see because we always go Monday at 5:00 PM or whatever it is. Uh, so I would try to meet people in different places. I would try to make sure everybody knew my number and my email address, which I can give at the end of this. Um, but then they could call me and ask. And I do think we need to have more community members show up to the regular school board meetings. Because if they're saying, well, we don't know what's going on at the school board, well, if you don't come to the meetings or you don't watch them on TV, you're probably not gonna know what's going on. And it's important to know what's going on because this is our community. This is everybody here. We need to have the community standards and the school board needs to know what your standards are. And I think that it would be important to go to as many places as I could and to hear from as many people as I could. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, if elected, how would you gather input from constituents? And how would that input play a role in your decision-making on the school board?
I think one thing that is important to remember is, uh, you sometimes only get the input that you solicit. And so a big part of being on the school board is not just waiting for members of the community to come to you and share their concerns or members of the staff. Um, sometimes you have to go out in the uncomfortable situations and gather that input on your own. Um, and there are a lot of situations over the last couple of years where I think without that effort by the entire board, um, there would have been some wrong decisions made that were avoided. Um, uh, another point of view to what you do with the feedback that you receive is understand what your role is with that feedback. Um, understand that as a board member, you may not be the right person to solve every community member's concern and all of the input that, uh, they may give you. Um, there, you know, one of the biggest ways to destroy trust in the district is for a staff member to come to the school board with a concern and the school board member to address it improperly. Um, disrespectfully, you may be passing several levels of our organizational leadership by doing so. Um, but a lot of it has to do with soliciting that information. I was lucky enough this morning to go into work late and ride my bike with my daughter to school on National Rider Bright to Work Day. Uh, and we passed a flag bearer stopping traffic. And I, aside from good morning, asked her how her day was going and found out some very simple ways that we can improve her daily life. So, um, engaging and soliciting input is, is very important.
Thank you. Our next question, we will start with Sarah. Um, Sarah, some have expressed the concern that the current school board administration does not listen to public input. How would you describe the school board's current relationship with public? And what, if anything, should be done to improve communication and input on school district-related issues?
Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure.
It's a long one.
Sure, yeah. Sorry, I'm kinda long-winded sometimes, but yeah, we'll give it another shot. Some have expressed the concern that the current school board and administration does not listen to public input. How would you describe the school board's current relationship with the public? And what, if anything, should be done to improve communication and input on school district-related matters?
So I would, ooh, this is a tough one. I do, um, think that between the six of us on the board, that we listen to what our constituents are saying. We bring those to the administration. And when we do that, we hear all of the other background stuff. Different policies, uh, budget issues, um, availability of employees, those types of things. And then that all has to percolate, right? And then it's our job to communicate back to the constituents, um, why we're making the decisions we're making. And I think that we've worked hard in the last four years to be more, um, transparent, so that the community knows at a board meeting why we're making the decisions we're making and asking questions that we've actually heard from our constituents. And, um, I think we need to continue to do that. Um, we also need the community to reach out. Um, I think our current relationship for the most part is good. Um, but I do know there are people in this community that feel like they're not being heard. Um, and I'd hope that they listen when we have our discussions at board meetings so that they know that we've asked these questions too and we're making our decisions based on a lot of information that they may not know.
Thank you. Tiffany, some have expressed the concern that current school board, the current school board does not listen to the public input. How would you describe the school board's current relationship with the public? And what, if anything, should be done to improve communication and input on school district-related, related issues?
So over the past five years, um, of being on the board, I would say the level of engagement from the community and input has radically decreased after COVID. Uh, my first three years on the board, I kept a spreadsheet of hundreds of people that I had conversations with. Hundreds, you guys, like, um, a- and it was a full-time job. And as soon as that was sort of like pushed aside, um, the things that we hear most engagement on, I would say are not in our purview of our job. Um, Michael Scott, our director of teaching and learning, spends hours on the phone with people all the time, answering questions. I, I went to people who say that we are not responsive, I say false. I'm sorry. It may not be the answer you wanna hear, but our administration and our board works tirelessly to, to get those answers. Um, I will say that, um, if anybody has felt that way when I was the board chair, I will take ownership and responsibility of that. I was the board chair in calendar years twenty-two and twenty-three. I worked really hard to build an inclusive space where people felt welcome at meetings. I'm getting a crusty eye from you. I welcomed you every single time. If you email me, I write back. I call you back. Um, I, I worked really, really hard at that. Um, our level of authority here, that's why I said earlier, we have to do a better job of communicating what our job is to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew, some have expressed the concern that the current school board does not always listen to public input. How would you describe the school board's current relationship with the public? And what, if anything, should be done to improve communication and input on school district-related issues?
I blame the local media.
That wouldn't be the first time.
Shoot, um, well, yeah, no, I don't think, I think the school board has done, whenever I have wondered about something, I have been able to go online, download an agenda, download minutes, read them. I've been able to watch a meeting online. I've been able to stream it. I've been able to, if I want to, I could come and make a public comment. Uh, not even related to the agenda very loosely, which I don't agree with. But, um, I think it should be related to the agenda if it's gonna be a public comment. Otherwise, you got a whole month you can talk to people. Um, so I, I think that's unfair. Um, I think one of the reasons this is happening, it's happening all over to churches, so, you know, social ministry organizations, nonprofits. Um, consent agendas came around, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years ago. And, and we do tend to move through meetings, right? People are busy, right? I, I hate meetings. I don't know why I'm doing this, but, um, and we wanna move through and we wanna move quick. But I, I think we need to have a little bit more transparent conversation at meetings. It's, and, and now I'm not saying we need to surprise the superintendent. Uh, uh, I think as a board member, I would go talk to the superintendent, talk to the business manager, say, I'm gonna, I have questions on this. I have disagreements on this. This is, and I'd have that conversation. But say, I also, I wanna have that conversation at the board meeting because I think the public needs to hear it.
Thank you. Diane, some have expressed the concern that current, that the current school board does not listen to public input. How would you describe the school board's current relationship with the public? And what, if anything, should be done to improve communication and input on school district-related issues?
I would say that it is somewhat of a challenge to get to a school board meeting because usually people start their week on a Monday and then Monday night rolls around and it's, oh, darn it, I missed the school board meeting. And, um, so don't hold them on a Monday. No, I'm kidding. Um, if you make the effort, you can attend a school board meeting. The problem is, is that when you come in, they have the agenda. And there's some things that are not open for public debate because they're, uh, being, there's a discussion, um, that's not within the public meeting. And when the public sees that, they're not liking it because they feel like things are being hidden. So I think that should very much be limited. The other thing is, is that if you're gonna have a public meeting and you're gonna ask for comments and maybe it's not on the agenda, but maybe we could say, okay, this is not on our agenda. We can talk a little bit about it, but we can also add it to next month's agenda if we need to or if there's a consensus in the community that they really wanna hear about something. Because then the person can come back and get their answer. The board has a chance to look at the issue and do the research and find a good answer. So I think that would be helpful.
Thank you. Michael, some have expressed the concern that the current school board does not listen to public input. How would you describe the school board's current relationship with the public? And what, if anything, should be done to improve communication and input on school real, school district-related issues?
Uh, well, I'll start by saying, I think that a board can always do better. I think that there are creative ways that we have talked about engaging with the community in different environments, different settings, with different restrictions and different rules. Um, with that said, I'm gonna agree with Tiffany here and say that I think it's, it's blatantly false that there's an exerted effort on behalf of the board to conceal public information. Uh, I did a little math just a few days ago and found that over the last three and a half years, I've attended about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty meetings. Um, not all of those are regular board meetings, not all of those are special work sessions. But of those hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, I can say that eighty-five to ninety had no public present. Um, not because they were closed door, not because they weren't open to the public, but because the public didn't attend. Um, I'm gonna steal a line from a teacher that I talked to tonight, who said, that's a great myth. And that myth allows someone to feel better about the fact that they're not engaged in the community and they're not attending meetings and they're not asking questions. And so I think the same is happening here. If you want to hear from the board, call us, message us. If you want to understand how the board operates, come to a meeting and not just for public comment. You've gotta stay through the whole thing so that you can hear the reasoning behind the decisions.
Thank you. Mark, some have expressed the concern that the current school board does not listen to public input. How would you describe the school board's current relationship with the public? And what, if anything, should be done to improve communication and input on school district-related issues?
Okay, so, um, I guess from what I'm hearing, and I guess I would agree that many people don't understand what the school board's job actually is and that some things are out of the scope. That being said, um, I think that the school board needs to be, uh, and, and I'm, I'm not on it. You, some of you guys have been on it, so we don't see some of the inside things that go on. But I hear a lot of people saying that they're not engaged. And I understand if you don't come to a meeting, um, and participate, uh, that really you have no reason to gripe. But, um, I guess, uh, the, the, it is a consensus amongst many community members that, uh, things are not getting back to the public. Okay, as far as closed-door meetings, can you have them? Absolutely. Are they legal? Absolutely. But does it build trust and support or does it build suspicion and mistrust? That's, that's the question. So again, That's, that's the question. So again, if, if the thirty minutes prior, if you want to address the school board, I think there needs to be a little give and take there as well, as you can limit the time. And just engage there. And if it's something that needs to be put on another agenda, maybe two weeks out or the next month, then by all means do it. But, and I do know that there's, many times this room is not filled at all. So those are my thoughts.
All right. Thank you. Our next question, we are back to Tiffany, right? Am I counting right? Yeah, there we go. Tiffany, sometimes not everyone agrees on, on issues. Yet for school board members, it's important to be able to work together and build consensus whenever possible, especially on contentious issues. Could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not?
The short answer is yes. That is our job. The time for us to share our experience, our opinion, is right here at this table, or at the table in our work session. That is when we get to share why or why not. We may agree on what's at hand. I think we do that really well. We have, first of all, I'm also gonna say, you do not want a board that is all the same. You don't want everybody with the same experience, the same political agenda, the same age, same gender, none of that, right? We have a, a fairly good collection of people on our board right now that represent different angles of life, and I think that's super valuable. I learn from all of them every single meeting. So we have to take that opportunity to dialogue, to share, to challenge each other. And after the vote, if it doesn't go my way, that's the board's vote and that's where I support. You're up, Andy.
Thank you.
Tell the joke. I'm so serious. You're gonna tell the joke.
Would you like me to repeat the question? Yeah, okay. Sometimes not everyone agrees on issues, yet for school board members, it's important to be able to work together and build consensus whenever possible, especially on contentious issues. Could you support a board decision that you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not?
Yeah, as long as Tipton disagree with me, I'd be fine. Yeah, you have to, right? I mean, because that's the decision and, and you gotta support, you want the best for the school district. And so we can't run around, I know Minnesota is just famous, well, the whole world is, but especially Minnesota for passive-aggressive. Well, I knew we shouldn't have done that. But you can't be like that, right? We gotta like make a decision and, and then you, you, you try to support it because you want it to succeed. And that's our job. We want our district to succeed. So yeah, I, I agree with everything Tiffany said. You make your statements here and then you get behind what, what the decision has been. Just like on November sixth and seventh, you know, after election day, and we know the results, right? We're gonna hope for success for whoever wins at all levels of politics because that's how we succeed as a community, as a country.
Good. Thank you. Diane, sometimes not everyone agrees on issues. Yet for school board members, it's important to be able to work together and build consensus whenever possible, especially on contentious issues. Could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not?
I suppose it's always hard to support a, a decision that you don't personally agree with. I think that the most important thing for all of us is to get with our communities and the people that we're talking to so that it's not just our lived experience. It's the community's ideas and the community's opinions that we're, well, would, that I would be bringing into the room. It's just not me. So I think that it would be hard. You do have to learn to agree and sometimes decisions are gonna go five-one or two-four or they might be split and you might have to keep going with something. But I think as long as everybody is willing to listen and hear what the other members of the board are saying, you might be able to, I might be able to agree a little bit more. But I will admit that it will not be easy to always support what everybody else is doing because you can always disagree, but you have to come together at some point. And you should be able to express your opinion and have it listened to.
Thank you. Michael, sometimes not everyone agrees on the issues. Yet for school board members, it's important to be able to work together and build consensus whenever possible, especially on contentious issues. Could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not?
The answer is yes, but before I explain more, I see some other board members in here and I'm gonna ask them not to make any faces, but. I believe in self-reflection and this was when I first got onto the board as a first-year member, my biggest weakness as a board member. Understanding that without collaboration, without cooperation, without empathy for a different person's perspectives, your opinion truly doesn't matter to the board. At the end of the day, every individual who sits up here carries one-sixth of the power of the board as a whole. And if you don't accept that, this isn't the place for you. Tiffany said something and I just wanna refer back to it. A like-minded board is a weak board and an ineffective board. A board of diverse opinions, diverse populations, diverse life experiences is a great strength to a board. There are a lot of discussions we have where a perspective I know nothing about may sway how I vote. So the answer is yes to your question.
Thank you. Mark, sometimes not everyone agrees on the issues. Yet for school board members, it's important to be able to work together and build consensus whenever possible, especially on contentious issues. Could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not?
So the answer again would be yes to that. I would support it. I think though that there needs to be, you know, like you said, to work through. Oftentimes, if you eliminate the discussion amongst board members, then it's just everybody parroting everybody else. And so to have open discussion, to think about, to come back together, to work through it, I think it's, it's just like a, a family situation where you, you have things going on. But ultimately, anybody that's got children, if you're arguing, parents are arguing in front of their children, their children see that. But if you come together, you may disagree, but do it in private and come together with, with the united front. So that would be my thought.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, sometimes not everyone agrees on the issues. Yet for school board members, it's important to be able to work together and build consensus whenever possible, especially on contentious issues. Could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not?
I can say absolutely because I have. And I think the reason that I have is because I am a person who is curious about other people's experiences. And I think that our board has learned how to have, be able to express different perspectives and opinions. And I may have walked into a meeting having what I thought my vote was gonna be. And then Danny or Michael might say something, I go, huh, I've never had that experience. Okay, can you explain that more? I mean, we have these discussions and very recently, we had a meeting. And I think at the beginning of when we were making a decision, we were kind of a three-three. And I really had to listen to the experiences that other people had. And two of us ended up saying, you know what, I think I'm gonna trust you and what you saw and how you look to the future. And I trust that. We have to trust each other. And I think that we have learned really well how to do that. And so, yeah, we do have to come to a united front. And sometimes we end up voting in a way we personally don't agree with because there's a mandate or a policy that comes down from above. And so, yeah, we gotta do it.
All right. Thank you. We have reached that point of our forum that you all get to say one last pitch for yourself before the election. So we're gonna start with Andy, Andrew. And you have two minutes to tell us whatever you would like to say. Well, within reason.
Well, it's an honor to just be running, you know, and thanks for everybody coming and for you listening online. Thank you for listening. Smash that thumbs up button and smash that subscribe button. I don't know if you can do that. But it's, it's great to be engaged. So, and thanks for all who made this happen because it's so important. And we're all up here because we think it's important and there's three seats, so there'll be three, but there's always next time. So, but I, I, I think the, what I bring is sort of a, a diversity of, of background. I, I get along with everybody. My college roommate at Concordia was on the, still is, on the complete opposite political spectrum as me. And we're, we're still best buddies. We still, he lives halfway across the country. We still go see each other. And he, he is the manager of our fantasy football league. I'm two and three this year so far. But I'm doing, doing okay. And so I get along with everybody. I, I got friends. So because of my hobbies and, you know, it's just, I, I think that's important. So I can, I'll be able to get along with other board members, community members. I'm pretty, I think, approachable in, as term, in far as talking to people. I also think, and I've talked a lot about this on social media and in posts, that I'm independent. And I'm not, I've gotten emails, you know, will you fill this out to, so that we can, we can support you as a candidate for school board? Will you, will you take this questionnaire? Will you take this pledge? And I have just kind of said, I'm, I'm not doing that because I think there's, there's enough layers of maybe disagreement or division that can come between us that we don't need outside groups in our business.
Thank you. Diane, you have two minutes for a closing statement.
Well, let's see. I've lived in Hutchinson for thirty years. I've seen a lot. I really like Hutchinson. I think that the school does a great job in some ways. I like the special ed department especially because I've lived through that with my son. I really like working with the students that we've worked with from the American Legion. It's a big part of my life. I think there's a lot that the community can do to help the students. There's a lot that the students can do to help the community. I think that working together, we can figure out what's best for the students. But ultimately, we have to get back to community standards. I think that the declines are really noticeable and I think we really need to work on the basics with each kid. And then moving forward, we need the community to come out and tell us what you think. And I'm here to listen for that. So I hope you'll, you'll choose me. Thanks.
Thank you. Michael, two minutes for a closing statement.
Well, first of all, just again, thank you to everyone who was involved in putting this together. I am thankful to see all six candidates up here. I appreciate everyone who's put their name in the hat for what I've learned to be a very challenging role and much more involved than I believe four years ago. My wife works in the district. My two young kids go here. Education in Hutchinson is important to me. I, I also want to challenge everybody in the room and anybody that's listening. This ninety minutes did not tell you everything that you need to know about the candidates sitting up here. There are a lot of days left until November fifth. Call us, email us, ask us to meet you somewhere. I believe the work of a school board is incredibly important in a community. I think that the decisions that we make can be life-changing. And for that reason, this isn't an office that a community should ignore and shouldn't pay very close attention to. I would challenge everyone to get to know the six candidates up here and make the decision you believe to be best suited for the community. So I've been thankful for the three and a half years that I've had on the board. I'm hopeful for four more. But get to know more about us. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Mark, two minutes for a closing statement.
Well, I would, I would agree. Thank you for hosting this forum. Thank you for the people that have come. I think that I would bring, I'm a deep thinker. Okay, and that being said, questions are the answers. And, and so again, to, you know, community members, call us, email us. I think our emails and phone numbers are out there. And feel free to ask the questions. And we need to engage. If somebody, if I don't know the answer to something, the way I deal with that is I don't know the answer. And I'll go and dig it, dig up on it. You know, look it up, get an educated answer to it and then we can talk. And, and that comes back to the board and the discussion is there. So I consider the being on a board as being a public servant, not an authority figure. And I think that's an important thing. We need to get back to the basics here in Hutchinson. We need to start looking and engaging with all of you. And so all that being said, I, like I said, questions are the answers. And so feel free to always ask. I don't think any one of us should ever have the idea that we have all the answers. And, and, you know, if you got an answer, maybe your question, it may disagree with what we have, but let's, let's engage.
Thank you. Sarah, your turn.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to everybody who is here and engaged. Public makes a community worth living in, all of us participating and finding out more information that's out there. I will tell you that I, it was not an automatic that I was going to run for a second year. I'd only planned to run for one term. And I, I gave it a lot of consideration. The school board is a lot more time than you understand it to be. And I just had to give it some thought. I got emails or met with every board member who encouraged me to stay on the board. And some of their reasons included that I am a good listener. I am curious about the problems. I have a passion for education. I want to be a lifelong learner and I want to advocate for our students, for our teacher, our teachers. I consider other perspectives and can change my mind. Those are all things that you want in someone making these big board decisions for our students. And we can't make them all. We can give our administration, our school district, a vision, trust them to follow through on that. And we can have a part in that, and I want to have a part in that. I love being a part of making those decisions, even when they're hard. And it gives me comfort that when I am a no vote and everybody else is a yes vote, they have come to that decision not because someone told them to or some political whatever. It's because they have considered it. And I've worked with board members who are very thoughtful and I want to continue to do that.
Thank you. Tiffany.
So one of the goals of the school district, one of our mission, part of our mission statement is that relationships are critical for success. And I think not all of us have all the same gifts. Maybe one of the things that I work on very hard is listening and creating true, authentic, meaningful relationships with everybody, with my teammates, with the people in the community, with the people that take care of my kiddos during the day. community, with the people that take care of my kiddos during the day. Um, and my promise and commitment, I get emotional, because it means something to me, that I take this role very seriously. Um, I've been honored to have had an incredible amount of personal growth over the last five years. Um, this job is challenging, to have to look at somebody that you disagree with, and get them there with you is hard. Um, to, to talk to somebody who you've been rallying for, and saying, we did it, is also hard, right? It's, this is fun, fulfilling work for me, and, um, I've just been honored to be here. So, um, I think one of the other things that I just want people to think about when they're voting, is who do you trust to make decisions for you, on behalf of you, um, when you've shared your opinion, shared your experience, um, that, that trust piece matters, um, and who can compassionately go and fight some conflict? Um, I'm not afraid to get in that ring, I will go up to Mark at CashWise, I'm gonna hear him trash talking to me, and go right up and be like, let's talk! I love that stuff, right? That's growth, that's like, that's what this community needs, is people who will get in there, and, and have the real conversations, so that we have those super successful relationships, so that our board can work together, and our kids can grow. Thank you. Brent, we're so happy you're here, this couldn't have happened without you, and, um, he is pulled in a hundred directions.
Your time's up. Once again, I do sincerely wanna thank all of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum, uh, and I wanna thank everyone who either showed up here at City Center, uh, to watch the forum in person, or who is watching at home. Deciding who should help chart the course of our schools is an important task, and the more informed we are about the candidates, the better decisions we can make. And speaking of, uh, being better informed on candidates, I wanna give Valerie a, a, a moment to talk a little bit about another candidate forum, that the chamber will be working on putting together here, uh, later this month.
Okay. Um, Hutchinson area voters will have an opportunity to learn more about our local candidates for the Hutchinson City Council, McLeod County Board of Commissioners, and the Minnesota House of Representatives, at a forum set for six-thirty PM on Wednesday, October twenty-third. That will be here at the Hutchinson City Center. Um, we're going to be doing a question and answer event, and it's sponsored by the Hutchinson Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism, and the Hutchinson Station. So questions will be prepared in advance, and the public has two options to witness the event, attend in person, like you all did here, or view it on HCVN, Channel Seven. If you have any further questions about that, please feel free to reach out to the Hutchinson Chamber of Commerce, we're happy to answer your questions.
All right. And finally, I, I just wanna thank Education Hutchinson, Valerie MacIntune, MacIntune, I knew I was gonna do that wrong, um, and the Hutchinson Chamber of Commerce, Doug Hanneman, HCVN, and anyone else, uh, wait, I'm not gonna stop there, and Tina Borliczek, for her wonderful work, uh, I forgot her the first time, I wanna make sure she gets credit, she, she put a lot of time into this as well, so thank you all for making this happen. Uh, now comes the important part for all of you, uh, learn more about the candidates, and, uh, go cast your vote. Thanks. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
[applause]